Good morning, it is 9:07 and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First items, the consent agenda. The commission may request for consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the staff with no opposition received to date. We're going to do public comment in one hearing for all of the consent agenda. The only thing on the agenda for this month are the minutes from December and January. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion as presented?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Six zero. Regular agenda subdivision Platts, the Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Case one is FP 2401, the request to final plat CFA addition block A lots one and two being a total of 3.298 acres located approximately at the corner of North 23rd and North Bryant in the general commercial heavy commercials zoning district.
Good morning, Aaron Benoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. We do have the CFA addition here at the corner of 23rd and North Bryant. You can see on the map that's highlighted there, it is the red areas that are highlighted. There's a current structure and then some blank land just to the north of Martin Luther King Park there off of Martin Luther King Boulevard. So this is a request to final plat, two abstract pieces of property is District Four Mrs. Lucy Gonzalez in Blackshire neighborhood. So here, as you can see, very busy plat, but on the left side of your screen is Bryant or Highway 87, to the north is 23rd and on the right is Martin Luther King Boulevard. And so if you look at that, there's kind of a dotted line right in the middle that is for the separation between the two lots right through there. So Lot One is on this side and Lot Two is on this side. You also will notice that there's an access easement that reaches 23rd, comes down, reaches MLK and then comes across here and will actually connect across here through an access agreement and to North Bryant. All of the roads around are at the standard dimensions for right-of-way and for paving width, so there's no improvements needed. There is water and sewer in 23rd and in Martin Luther King. The only improvements that are required are going to be extending the water and potentially sewer down here to these lots that are just down here to the south. There will be a drainage study required, but it does meet all of our purpose statements and everything. I put this slide in here just so you can see the future development that's coming in here where this is that access easement that does come across those lots to the south and they are working with Tech Dot to have a D cell lane and a right turn only in. And of course it'll be a right turn only out because that's, there's not a way to get across 87 to head back south. So that's also the reason for the access easement to loop around back to 23rd which is a controlled intersection and that way people can then head back south if they choose to. With that, we recommend approval with the five conditions of a tax cert, a drainage study, sidewalks which have been requested to be deferred to the site plan, the water and sewer main extension south North Bryant and to install water and sewer taps to each lot. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Aaron. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single member district. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Move to approve as presented?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Six zero. Items two and three, I'm going to read in together. Item two is PP 2401, request preliminary plat Hagelstein addition, Hagelstein addition, section two, located northwest of the intersection at Great Creek Road and West 34th Street being 4.025 acres in the single family RS1 district. And FP 2402, request to final plat Hagelstein addition, section two, for four new residential lots located northwest of the intersection of Great Creek Road and 34th Street, single member, excuse me, single family zoning district RS1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Austin Reed, planning technician. I'm bringing to you both the preliminary and final plat for Hagelstein addition, section two. The preliminary plat spanning five lots over four acres, pretty much everything you see outlined there in red on the aerial. This is up off of Great Creek Road in Tom Thompson's district Riverside neighborhood. This is coming out of abstracts. The final plat is going to be for those five lots there along the bottom towards West 34th. So this is that preliminary plat, see things a little bit better. That large lot, you'll notice there's some pre-existing structures on it and although it is a large lot, this is RS1 zoning. I'll go ahead and move on to the final plat. In addition to RS1 zoning, the vision plan holds it to be neighborhood, so these four lots should be used for single family homes. These all do meet minimum lot size requirements. Three of them are 50 by 140 and then that one there on the corner starts off at 44 feet, but it does widen out. Water and sewer here appear to be fine as well, all I should mention. So in taking a look at the thoroughfare for the subdivision, we have a minor collector and a local street, Great Creek Road being the minor collector. The paving width is 40 feet, right-of-way width varies, but right here it's about 88 feet. For West 34th, our local street, paving width at 35, right-of-way width at about 60. For both measurements on both these streets, these are safely above their minimums, so staff doesn't seem to have any concern here. They both have care of me as well. Onto our staff recommendation for the preliminary plat, staff is recommending approval. And then for the final plat, staff is recommending approval again with, it should be two conditions of approval and then one note, the conditions being for the tax cert and then one for the drainage study as well. And then we have one note that the building setback line that's shown on the plat should just kind of be extended to show that Lot One is a double frontage lot. I'll go ahead and flip back to the plat and I'd be happy to hear any questions you might have.
Okay, so the note on the approvals is for Lot One. Is that correct?
Yes, it's pretty much just to extend that 25-foot building setback line up there.
Up the side.
Yeah, just to show that it's double frontage.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? Thank you, Austin. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Six zero on both. Item four, FP 2403, request for final plat of the Palms, section five, located at North Hillside Drive in the RS1 zoning district, a variance request from section nine 3A1 for direct and abutting access to a public right-of-way.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry Planner. This is the Palms, section five. The final plat is 2.933 acres in RS1 zoning. It's off of Hillside Drive and the district is Tommy Hebert and Nazworthy Neighborhood. I tried to take a bigger picture to show all of Hillside Drive because the variance request is, let me move, okay. Lot 12 does not abut an actual street, it's an access easement. So their variance request is to have lots 12 and half of 13 not abut an actual street. So let me go back, hold on. So I took a more picture to show, so they're talking these lots right here because Hillside Drive is down here, there is an access easement before their new road will start. And this is their streets just to show you a little bit more of the churning radius. If you look down here, if you're coming this way uphillside, you'll just kind of go straight in and then you should be able to see it's not as bad of a churn radius. So staff is recommending approval of the variance and the plat. They need to provide the tax cert, install necessary water and wastewater service lines to each new lot and submit the plans for the required construction of the new road. There's also a note, we have requested that they, I'll use that one, they changed the Northside Hillside, North Hillside Drive name and they are working with 911 Coordinator to accomplish that. And with that, is there any questions?
Could you go back to that map? Yes. So the North Hillside Drive is what you're talking about them working with, getting that name changed?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, we heard from emergency services and with their new database to have a Hillside Drive and then a North Hillside Drive can cause delays in their response time. So for safety reasons, we have asked if they would change that.
So Hillside is the existing road that's on kind of the south end of the plat that we're looking at?
Correct, yeah, it's down here.
So what is the road that's going to the west?
That will be the new road that they are going to construct.
That's?
Oh wait, the west, never east, yes, sorry.
What's the hill?
This one.
Yeah, what's that?
This is a private, private drive that they have to these other lots.
Okay, so it's not a public road?
It is not.
Is North Hillside Drive a public road?
It will be starting at Lot 13, if you notice this line right here. So at Lot 13, it'll be a public.
So what's the, how do you address Lot 12?
I would ask 911 Coordinator about that, but I believe it would be off of the, whatever the new name is that they choose.
Okay.
Eventually, it most likely will turn into a public street.
Okay. All right, anyone else have questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case?
Good morning, Russell Gully with SKG. The street name, we've proposed to them, several of them, but I think Ladera is one that we're kind of leaning towards, which is Hillside in Spanish. So, got real creative there.
I like it.
So, yeah, years ago, whenever that area was looking at being developed and some of the land exchanges and work that was done there, Hillside Drive kind of ties a lot of the lots there on the lake through access easements and everything else. So Hillside is, functions as a public street or public walkway maybe depending on if you're a walker or, so that when we preliminary plotted this area of the old power plant, what we identified as North Hillside Drive continued all the way back around and ties into Knickerbocker Road. So the thought at the time was that someday when that connection comes in, maybe that the other part of Hillside could almost be closed to through, to vehicular traffic and then maybe then could be just primarily for walkers, is that now Ladera Drive makes that connection to Knickerbocker. So would be happy to answer any questions.
The only question I've got is this intersection with Hillside and it's just kind of a funky, the angle of Ladera? The angle of Ladera coming in is unusual.
It is, except for the long-term look at the idea that Ladera would become the main connection to Knickerbocker in the future. If you look at the way Hillside Drive comes in and the topography there, where the existing, I guess, private drive makes the turn and goes back west to those existing lots.
Yes, sir.
There's a pretty wide open maneuvering area there, so if someone is coming along Hillside from the east, it may make for a little bit of a tight turn there, but we're substantially wide with our pavement.
Okay.
Through that area, so when you take into, if you look at it, you know, we kind of have, it's a 40-foot street there for what Ladera would be, plus kind of the radius, plus the existing Hillside. It really makes a, it's a radius and a big wide turn there. So even if from a fire protection standpoint, a fire truck could maneuver that with, you know, they require a 28-foot inside radius, so they could maneuver that even with emergency vehicles responding to that.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Russell? Thank you, Mr. Gully.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Make a motion, wait, can we go back to the, just the standard, make a motion to approve as presented?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Six zero. Item five, FP 2404, request to final plat, the Palms, section six, located on Hillside Drive within the single family RS1 zoning district.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry again. This is the other half of that area, so we're looking at 3.135 acres in RS1 zoning off of Hillside Drive in District One and Nazworthy Neighborhood. So now we are looking at lots 16, 17, 18, and 19 to finish off that area. And again, we would have the name changed instead of North Hillside Drive.
Okay.
And this is the same street plan, so you can see it goes all the way through. And so this one, they did not have the variance request because they will have that new street. But they are, we are asking for them to do the tax cert, install necessary water and wastewater service lines to each new plat, or new lot, I'm sorry, submit plans for the new road and then we are going to change item number four. Instead of doing the quick claim deed for Lot 20, we would like them to either remove it from the plat or list it as unbuildable.
All right, could you go back to the plat?
So if you notice, 20 is down here.
On the south end.
And it's.
That's pretty steep, that's probably not buildable.
Correct.
And their future intention is to dedicate it to the city. It's just a process that has to go through City Council to get it fully dedicated to the city, transferred to the city.
All right.
With that, any questions?
No questions, thank you, Ray. Going to open this one up for public comment.
Russell with SKG. So for Lot 20, the developers open either way, as you indicated, the terrain gets fairly steep kind of going back up that hill, but it's also too narrow or not deep enough, I guess you could say. So the idea would be is that it is plat, is Lot 20 potentially just deed-ing, gift-eating, however that lot to the city. Or we may even have conversations with the city if they're willing or open to sell or do some exchange to, if we could increase the depth of that Lot 20 further, I guess I'm going to call that kind of south to where we would have maybe 120 to 140-foot deep lots, then maybe that could come in and be three or four lots. So I think maybe from this point, well, going forward, this is kind of a phased deal. The economy is kind of soft and slow for lake lot sales, so the idea would be to get lot, or get section five done and then that would give some time to figure out and work with the city on what to do with Lot 20. So that note gives us great flexibility on how we deal with it.
Okay.
So thank you and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Russell. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
As presented, sorry, with making note four saying Lot 20 is unbuildable, correct? Is that what we figured?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve changing the note four to an unbuildable lot. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right, conditional uses. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Item one, CU 2401, request for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental located at 239 Robin Hood Trail in a RS1 zoning district.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry again. This is an STR, first one for 24, just kidding. This is a request for short-term rental with RS1 zoning, District Five, Karen Hesse-Smith in the Bluffs neighborhood. This is the map of the Bluffs neighborhood and we do have one that is active, the green in the top right corner. The yellow is where this request is. The one, I was going to say purple, but it might be blue.
That is a massive area.
It is.
Okay.
The one in purple-blue has received a CU, but no, has not finished the process. It is within 510 feet from this one, so they are good. And then the one expired in the top left corner. We mailed out 34 notices, we received three in favor, one opposed, the one in opposition just checked the box, there was no comment of to why. So staff is recommending approval. They need to maintain their paved parking, obtain their certificate of occupancy and do an annual fire inspection. With that, is there any questions?
Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single member district.
I'm Paul, I'm ex the owner of the property, me and my wife, unfortunately she couldn't be here today, but I just wanted to kind of give you a little brief background on the house because it's something, I'm not a real estate investor and never really intended even to own, operate an Airbnb. This house me and my wife purchased a couple of years ago, it's just attention to fix it up as a long-term rental and this was like before COVID hit. And at the time I hired a little high school kid about 15 or 16 to help me with some maintenance and some yard work at another long-term rental I had here in town. And I was only planning on, it was a real rundown, terrible house, maybe the worst one in the neighborhood, and we were just going to spend five or 10,000 to fix it up. And we started doing that for the first month and then one day my high school kid showed up and he was in tears and this is about the time COVID hit and he came from kind of a disadvantaged family, you know, no father in the home, single mom and he said they were about to lose their house because his mom got fired because she had worked at the Clarion Hotel and with nobody coming to town. And he was the only source of income and he was like, I need to do something. And so instead of me just fixing this house and having him working on the weekends, I did what I could, I put him to work full-time because he was at that time just, you know, not going to school full-time because they were working remotely. And through the able to make this an Airbnb, I was able to help that family out with giving him extra hours and now operated as Airbnb has allowed me to pay back a whole lot more money I had to put into it to make it as nice enough to make it an Airbnb. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for approving the property, if you proved it, I'm not sure, but if you do, that's great. That's a little background history, you know, I don't come, you know, I'm not rich person or anything like that and this really does help me and my wife out, you know, operating these properties as Airbnbs. So I wanted to thank everybody for their time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me, too.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Six zero. CU 2402, request for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental located at 224 Bird Street in a RS1 zoning district.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry again. And this one is for short-term rental and RS1 zoning, District Three, Harry Thomas at Fort Concho neighborhood. Oh, I forgot a map. There was only three in this neighborhood and one was expired and then one was currently operating and then we have this one. This is pictures of the parking, they do have paved parking. It's around back in the, oh no, here's the map, look at that. I did remember it, I just put it out of order. So the current request is the yellow and then we have two operating and we have one that's expired. And we sent 24 notices, we received three in favor and zero opposed. And staff is recommending approval. They maintain their two paved parking, they get their certificate of occupancy and obtain a fire inspection. With that, is there any questions?
Any questions for the staff? All right, thank you, Ray. Going to open it up for public comment.
My name is Jesse McMillan, I'm with 224 Bird Street. This is our first Airbnb, but we want to become a big presence in these meetings. With the parking in the back, we actually took down the fence, I'm going to go finish it today actually, but we're moving it into the yard so that there will be parking off the street. We're going to put a light post there at the fence and then also a security camera. We just asked that y'all approve it for us because this is our first one and we're so excited, but thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Six zero. Okay, next item is C on the agenda, discussion items for direction and possible action. Item one is the CBD expansion discussion and direction.
Good morning, Commissioner Sherry Bailey, Principal Planner. This is a discussion item and I'm hoping that in fact there will be some discussion, certainly questions, so please feel free to stop me at any point to ask questions. Just a little bit of history for those of you that haven't been on the Planning Commission forever. In 2003, the city approved its comprehensive plan and then in 2009, it approved a vision plan for concentration on the, what it considered the downtown district and then the areas around that. It was not an update to the comprehensive plan so much as it was a strategic planning tool. It laid out some guidelines, it laid out some suggestions, it covered the need for particularly this large downtown development district, which actually covers 554.3 acres, almost a mile, a square mile. This is in District Three, Harry Thomas's district, and it is the downtown neighborhood. This area was seen as a cohesive center for the city of San Angelo. It's where residential met, commercial met, entertainment met, government, everything that was happening in the city. And it was envisioned in both of those plans that this would continue to be the heart of the city of San Angelo. And there were some suggestions and recommendations for moving forward with expanding that area, adding some distinctive rules to the area, some overlays, if you will. adding some distinctive rules to the area, some overlays, if you will. In phase one, it's actually backwards, so let me skip over here. What we're looking at, right now, the area that we do have central business district zoning on, and then we have an overlay over that, is the dark moth color. And then the property to the east, the property to the north, and then that property to the south down there has been partially brought in with central business district zoning, and presently is left with the zoning that it has. The idea was that happened first, and that happened in 2022, and I'm sure some of you remember that long discussion. And that discussion's still going on, if you will, because we've had some hiccups as we started with the kind of the joint operation between the planning commission and the DHRC, which does the reviews for the area in the overlay area, if you will, because those are designed reviews. So we're looking at doing phase two. And the phase two that we envisioned was actually moving from here over to at least the west side of Maine, but we would like to take it over to Emmerich. And the difference of that is about another 40 to 50 lots and property owners that would be notified. What we'd like to do is extend the central business district zoning to that area, take that in kind of a two-step operation, if you will. Have a public meeting where we bring in all the property owners who have questions, encourage them to talk with us about their concerns about going to the central business district, what the difference would mean to them, because some of them have some zoning that is particularly either a heavy commercial or general commercial, and they may be concerned about it. But when doing the first drive-through of the area, we didn't see anything that wouldn't be covered under the central business district zoning. And so we feel comfortable about moving that direction with either going to the west side of Maine or going on over to Emmerich. The area that has some concern would be right in here, which is more of an industrial area. And so we're thinking that we would probably leave that area out and include it in the Fourth Street through Sixth Street, kind of industrial area that is kind of the third leg on what is proposed. Then the second leg would be down here to finish off this area over to this side and bring that in with central business district, commercial type of zoning in that area. The uses there are very similar. We, again, we looked at that area, we don't see anything that couldn't be covered by central business district. And it would make sense to just finish off those two areas on that bigger downtown development plan that was adopted. The third one, which is down the road quite a bit, is the industrial area along Fourth through Sixth. And it only makes sense to keep that industrial zoning, but look at it and be able to encourage development in there for two reasons. Number one, because those, a lot of those are historic industrial buildings. Other cities have in fact, across the state of Texas, done a historic overlay over their industrial, older industrial areas, and really worked with the owners to develop that into a, either an interesting residential area, a commercial area, kind of a joint-use area. And down the line, we'd like to open that discussion. Don't know how receptive all of the owners would be in there, but we would like to at least bring that forward to them. That would be the third pin and complete the entire downtown development district that was envisioned in the original comprehensive plan, and kind of pull everything together for that heart of the city development. With that, anybody have any questions yet? You guys let me go on a long time.
Just waiting.
Oh, all right, okay.
No. Yeah, go back to the map. Okay, so that's great for me.
Okay.
My first question, is the CBD a zoning designation or an overlay?
The CBD is a zoning.
So we are changing the zoning of these properties if we-
Yes.
If we adopt the expansion of the downtown area?
Yes, we would be doing that particularly for this one, either over to Maine or Emmerich.
So there's existing underlying zoning with all of these properties that we're looking at incorporating? And you've indicated that that zoning is adaptable to CBD?
Yes, and looking at-
With the exception of maybe some of the properties on the north end that are industrial.
Right.
So if someone, let's say it's residential, you've talked about, well, let me go back.
Yes.
Anything that's in the CBD goes before DHRC?
No.
No, okay. What goes before DHRC?
If we do an overlay, anything that we did an overlay for, if it was a historic piece of property, would go to DHRC.
But that's not what you're asking for. You're asking to change the zoning, right?
What I'm asking, yes, what I'm asking for is to change the zoning. We would like to look at the areas where an overlay would make sense, and then bring that back as kind of a second step.
So is the DHRC involved in any of the approvals of redevelopment or development of the area that we would incorporate into downtown?
Not for the CBD zoning, but they would be involved for the, in the overlay.
Where's the overlay?
And that's something that we, extending the overlay, that's something that we have not-
That's not part of this discussion right now?
That's not part of this discussion at this time. That's a second step. And depending on the feedback that we get from all of the property owners and what they want to do, and how much of that area is historic and needs to be preserved, we'll determine it.
Yeah, are you following where I'm going with this? So we're changing the zoning, but CBD zoning, and I'd like for you to maybe speak to this, is a much broader zoning than any of the zoning that's existing on the lots that would be brought in? Is that correct?
Well, CBD zoning-
Doesn't have parking requirements?
Does not have parking requirement, which is one of the reasons that everybody is interested in it.
Okay.
That's a very densely developed area, parking is-
A challenge.
A challenge.
Sure.
It also accommodates residential.
Yes.
And as you know, commercial, you have to get, right now, you have to get a conditional use if you want to have a commercial within, residential within a commercial zone. So CBD encourages that kind of joint use in that area. And that's really what we're aiming for here.
Okay.
Excuse me, up Maine or maybe Emmerich, how far up? Spalding or Pulliam, how far up before it becomes industrial?
It, the industrial actually starts, or, right about in this area.
Yeah, it's about Pulliam to the north, there's, I think there's an oil supply company there-
Yeah, on the other side, yeah.
And then Dandy's to the east.
Yeah.
Not south of Pulliam?
No.
Okay.
Everything south of Pulliam, when I went through and made my list of the uses that were there, would fit underneath CBD zoning.
Okay, so to go back and kind of complete my thought, the current zoning is, for all of these lots that we would consider, is narrow. CBD would broaden that zoning and loosen some of the requirements for redevelopment?
Yes, it would.
Okay, none of this zone change is going to, at this point, necessitate a DHRC review?
No.
So are there any other aspects of the zoning change from CBD, or to CBD, from whatever it is currently, that are different for those property owners? Is there anything else that they have to do under CBD that they don't have to do today?
As far as reviewing?
Anything.
Can you think of anything?
Is there anything on the heavy commercial that has unlimited outdoor storage versus central business district? Don't we have a limitation on outdoor storage? I could be wrong, but I'm trying to remember exactly.
Yeah, we do have that on outdoor storage, but outdoor storage is not in this first phase.
We don't have any heavy commercial.
And I'll back up that a little bit, it is on the one down here. We do have an outdoor storage on that one area that's up in this, kind of in this area, where it's, and then the one that's the lot that is just right now has just extra sitting there.
To answer your question, there would be an evaluation of outdoor storage-
Right.
Okay.
In the central business district.
Yeah.
Particularly if it was a new business to come in, into the central business district.
So I'm, in my mind, I'm thinking, if I'm a property owner, you know, what's my impact? And if the argument is, this broadens your ability to do anything with what you've got, that's a good argument. If instead you say, you can do certain things, but you're gonna be restricted in others, you know, it may be faced with some objection.
Yeah, same.
Specific question is, what does CBD restrict?
Yes.
Put more restriction on than is currently, so in this case, outdoor storage would have more restriction.
Right.
There are several areas that would have less restriction, like parking and all that, but what are the ones that would have more?
Right.
And is there anything other than outdoor storage?
I can't think of anything right offhand.
If you, if you look back in where we had the expansion to what we called the, kind of the north, just south of the warehouse district-
Yes.
There's Palmer Feed, and there was a couple of contractor yards that were, outdoor storage yards, basically.
Yes.
And so we chose to exclude them from including them in the central business district, because it'd make them non-conforming, and that was-
Okay.
We didn't want to do that. And so as we do that evaluation, and Sherry and the rest of the staff are really kind of asking, do we evaluate just past Central freshman campus and kind of do a line up to Pulliam and come south? Or do we go to Emmerich and come south down, you know, do we stop at Maine? That's kind of what we're saying, all right, do you want us to evaluate those properties? See which ones, come back to you and say, all right, well, these would be non-conforming, these are conforming, here's what the benefits are, here's what the cons are, we'd be, that's what we're asking for the next steps.
To expand it?
Yeah.
Because I mean, I know like, it's Texaco Star Stop, Regal Oil, they're right north of Pulliam-
Right.
Right.
Outdoor storage, and that's the industrial area.
Right.
But I'm trying, and there's nothing south of there, that's nothing more than just stores or-
Today is not a rezoning request, this is just a discussion for you guys to give us some information.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'd like it just to go on to Emmerich instead of stopping right at Maine, that's my thought.
I agree, you need to get both sides of Main Street.
Yeah, okay.
I think it'd be really interesting to, this side of you would really help.
Just to make sure there's nothing that's real crazy, they're like Palmer's.
Exactly.
You know, Palmer's sits right in the middle of that area, but it's an outlier. And there are over businesses over there that some I'm not familiar with.
So the areas you guys are looking at today, Sherry, are east, expanding east?
Expanding east.
Potentially Main Street?
The Main Street or Emmerich, we'd like to go to Emmerich, yeah.
I'm sorry, Emmerich, yes.
Right.
Both sides of Main Street.
Both sides, yeah.
Okay, not, not the northern end, it's the warehouse district.
No, I think those areas need to be handled separately, yes.
Okay, and then on the southern end?
We'll look at that as phase one, and then as phase two, come down here and look at this area, since we have already moved into that area with some central business district already that was expanded into there, and I think it's helped that area and met with a lot of support.
Okay.
Because there is some areas, particularly along Avenue D and Washington Street that comes back to Coenheim and Abe, that are certainly a mix, they're just not on our vision plan. And we're like, well, maybe we'll evaluate that with the south, too, does it make sense-
Yeah.
That we have businesses and residences there, and are there different ways to work with that area? I think we'll also come back with some imaging, some maps that show the different overlays, so that you kind of undersee what those overlays look like. We're not asking for the overlay extension at this time, we're just looking at the zoning. But that way you have a visualization of what it is.
But just to add to that, I think that you will, eventually, they'll be coming back with looking at those overlays, because you've got a cultural district, you've got a historic district, you've got a, and so some of that needs to be sort of-
Streamlined?
Streamlined, and also look at-
I agree.
What it is you're trying to protect and the area you're trying to protect.
Yeah, the other thing I'd say, I know you've mentioned the DHRC, and that is obviously part of the overlay discussion. The intent of the DHRC, I think, is good. My concern about the DHRC, and I've, I think I've said this to everyone that's asked me, is that I think it's highly subjective. If we can get more clearly defined rules within the DHRC, so that you guys can present cases and show specific aspects of a project and where they might differ from the vision plan, it would be a lot more beneficial, I think, for everybody.
Okay.
But in terms of expanding the downtown area, I think this makes sense.
Thank you, then.
Something that's not related to the boundaries, but rather the handicap. As you're developing the CBD, are we looking at any handicap access in the middle of the blocks? I'm taking several complaints that as we're aging on Tuig, Concho, and we're developing this area, the handicap cannot take their wheelchairs, cannot take-
Oh, I can speak to that.
Or don't have access to these stores. So is there something we can put in so that we can reevaluate? I don't know if we want to tie it to the businesses, but I do believe that part of the development has to be increased handicap toward the middle of the blocks instead of them parking and trying to get all the way around.
I know that our team over in Public Works has been working on some things in that area. They've been evaluating some areas, because they are adding some ramping in some areas. The, yes, challenging to put ramps in the middle of a block, because you're probably taking out three parking spaces for that ramping area to be done appropriately, and depending on how high, you know, all those types of things. But it should be a consideration when we're redoing things. There's some different projects that might be coming forward that they're looking at to help in some of those areas. Our, I don't know that our zoning would help, because if the ramp is in the right of way, that's not necessarily the business owner's responsibility, but I think it is something the city is taking a look at and is looking at very seriously, of how do we improve accessibility in that area, as well as other areas of town?
Yeah, and you've also got, I mean, as they redo those projects, you'll see that kind of stuff. But you've also got, Teresa James is serving as our ADA coordinator for the city now. She's been in that position for, I don't know, a year? So I encourage those people to also visit with her, argue, as you see, but yeah.
Is there anything that we can do from in here, though, I mean, to give direction? Because, and you know, the process, we can push it down- Because, uh, and you know, the, the process, we can push it down, but I saw some ladies really struggling, and probably men too, but these were ladies really struggling just to take a step onto Tuig, you know, they were on Tuig Street.
Yeah.
And they waited for some men to be walking by to help them up. And they were saying, what can we do that's more mandatory? And maybe something we can evaluate. I agree, I mean, we have the right people, but I think that until we put something in hard writing, that it's going to be difficult to do that. But you're just looking to that.
Yeah, and I think council has taken that as a priority. They've directed staff on all of the projects that they're doing, that those are priorities to, to make, ADA compliance with that. So I believe council has placed it as a priority. Do they have the money to go back and just here and there, you know, haphazard, not haphazardly, but retrofit in areas? They, they really don't, so they're trying to do it as all of that new construction or renovation is happening. So I, I think they have told Public Works that is a priority, so.
And with our tiers program, and our south tiers and our north tiers, that has become an emphasis as well as the ADA, and that is, there is funding available through that mechanism for those business owners to help improvements in that area. And that's some of the things we're looking at as criteria, uh, for those businesses that are applying for that funding.
The, uh, there's also a state mandated, uh, ADA requirement, and it's called a TAS, Texas Accessibility Survey, TOS inspection. Uh, and if you, I believe the threshold is $50,000, uh, in commercial construction. So if your project is in excess of $50,000, you're required to get that inspection done. Someone comes out and does a, a full assessment, and it is from the right-of-way through the property. So it's a requirement that you provide egress from the right-of-way, uh, as a property owner. So that would be another, another way of, of maybe getting some of this stuff addressed. It is a requirement, I believe. Uh, I don't know, does the city require the, uh, in terms of permitting, uh, is there, are they required? If you have a, let's say, a $200,000 remodel, are you required to provide proof that, uh, a TOS inspection was done?
We do require that they register, and then that is up for the, the state to actually do their inspection and, and those things.
Yeah.
Then the, the permit staff themselves actually do some review of those things, just to make sure the interior of the building, the stuff that they're responsible for, yeah, it looks like they're updating their restrooms and their walkways and, and things like that. So they do those types of reviews. Uh, then the Planning Department and Engineering Services look at site plans when it comes to site plans. Is there accessibility from the, on the site to the actual, uh, business or property, whatever it is at the time? So those evaluations do happen with city staff.
Okay. We've departed from where we started.
A little bit, but not really. Um, I'm going to take it, at least at this point, as a positive, and we'll move forward and keep coming back to you with information and asking for direction.
Okay. Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you.
Uh, item two on discussions is short-term rental ordinance amendment. Uh, points of concern from the City Council discussion concerning the amendment to the short-term rental zoning ordinance. Mr. Vanoy.
All right. So we have been drilling down, uh, each time we take a step forward, we just ask a few more questions to make sure that we are clarified and that we're all looking at this the same way. So on this first one up here, we talked about remove the reference to a license in those RS and RNE areas. Uh, those are the ones that would be required a conditional use. So we're looking at commercial properties. They currently would not have the requirement for conditional use or a technical, uh, what we would call a license, if you will. But there are certain processes already in place, um, for a change of occupancy and an annual inspection. So if the property's going from mercantile and they're going to have a short-term rental, that's where our Building Department does a change of occupancy. They look at certain things on that floor plan. They go out and they do inspections, and then the Fire Marshal has annual inspections for those. And so we just wanted to clarify that, that there are some, there are oversights, uh, in the commercial area. We don't want things, people to think that, oh, well, you can just pop up an STR wherever you want to. There may be some processes that you have to go through. During those processes, it's an internal process, but we will make sure that city staff are communicating with that potential STR. Then you must register to pay your hotel occupancy taxes, to get over to our local finance department here.
Yeah.
Get registered with them to, to do that on a, I think it's a quarterly basis. It might be every other month. I just don't remember. So we still have the rewording of the expiration. We still have the short-term rental 500, um, feet in those RS and RNE districts, and certain pla- uh, planned development zoning districts, if they have a residential base zoning. This one would be, uh, about the schools, and I've got some more for that, just some visual imaging for that, and a question at the end for, about the schools specifically, when it comes to commercial, but we'll talk about that in just a moment. We did, we still have the clarified process and requirements, and a shortened appeal period. And then the, um, checklist that the building official, uh, building team has come up with for checking those things every year in the residential areas. And then the standard, uh, requirements that have been kind of eliminated throughout the state through different court cases, we'll be moving away from those, as well as the limits on outside gatherings and the 30 feet of pavement width. So you've all heard most of those before. That's really not new information. We've kind of been discussing that for the last probably four months or so. So now I've got some imaging just to kind of talk about. So this is North Chadburn. You see Grape Creek Road up there and Grape Creek Road at the bottom and, and, uh, North Fortieth. You can see that the green area is general commercial, and you see the property at, uh, 4003 and 4007, and I may see if I can get this right here. Two residential-style structures. Um, this one has a conditional use for residential, um, to stay, for people to stay there, long-term rentals. This one, uh, has had a short-term rental in the past. It may be expired. I'd have to check, uh, just our list to see. But their intent is to, when, if and when the ordinance goes through, that these two properties become short-term rentals together. The Coliseum's just off to the, to the northeast. They get lots and lots of traffic during any kind of Coliseum activities. Our ordinance is, would move to allow that, because those are both in commercial districts. So they can be within the 500 feet of each other. So I wanted to give that as a visual representation, that that is not an issue. That, and then there'd be other processes that would deal with that. If they needed a change of occupancy under the building code, they would then go to the building officials', uh, team, and they would go through that and, and do those things. Currently, our ordinance does not allow that. And if we think about short-term rentals as hotels, well, we're certainly not going to tell a hotel at 4003 to say, you can't build there, because there's a short-term rental at 4007. We're, that's not going to take place. So that's why we're, our justification, and one thing is, let's allow these short-term rentals in these commercial areas. This one, just kind of a, a really good map, and I also want to say, thank Austin Reed for putting these maps together. He's done a great job of coming in and helping us visually kind of understand some things, and I think that, and that, that really makes a difference. So here we have, on the right side is RS2, so that is an RS district, and so we would have that 500-foot separation. On the left, as you can see, is the RM, and then some, uh, office commercial and general commercial up there at the top. Well, the red property, that's, is a short-term rental. So on the left side of the screen, you could have multiple short-term rentals within 500 feet. On the right side of the screen, you could only have them within 500 feet, and they'd have to have the conditional use. So that's just one of the representations, of course, as we move this, keep moving this forward to City Council, and we want to make sure they can see what it is that we're actually trying to look at.
Uh, yeah, before you go, come back.
No, no, let's move on.
So this is, this is an RM-zoned area that was developed as single-family.
It does look, it does appear that way, that there is a lot of single-family structures in that area. It is zoned low-rise multifamily, which allows all the way from single-family to multifamily.
Yes.
Usually the lots are more narrow, usually it's more dense, and there can be more properties through there.
Okay.
So my question, and I'm sorry to bring this kind of back up again, but remind me sort of, all right, the intention of the 500 feet? I mean, just obviously to, to not have a whole neighborhood full of short-term rentals. I mean, it's just basically... So, and this is really probably a question for you. Um, has this, is this something that other cities are doing? Is it something that has been blessed? Have we seen this brought up in court cases? Where, where?
So I think we're actually maybe the only city doing distance limitations. I think most are going to like a percentage of neighborhoods. Um, and we actually brought that up in a, like a training, and of all the people there, uh, yeah, we were the only ones doing the limits. Um, as far as court cases, um, the, the biggest one I can think of talked about limiting the number of licenses that you, um, would issue, and I think that's kind of what we're doing. But I, I don't think they addressed distance limitations specifically.
And, and my question stems from kind of like what Trinidad said earlier. I've had a couple people come and ask, like, well, how do, how do you, how do you figure that? And I can see in what, what the City Council brought up, it's conveying to people how that's being measured and that kind of thing. But I think we discussed this already too, with the issue with, if you're 500 feet from me, and I'm denied because of only that distance, then what does that look like for the renewal process? If you're not, I mean, right? And so, I guess maybe I'm just sort of, this 500-feet thing has, has me a little, got a little
The 500-feet thing is...
I understand the intention, but I wanted to make sure I did understand the intention.
Yeah. The, the 500-feet restriction, which is why city staff kind of initially said, we would recommend against that.
Right.
It is very dependent on enforcement and staff-heavy.
Right, yeah.
And that is very challenging to do, unless you have lots of complaints. And we have not had that historically so far. And so, you know, all because there's this imaginary zoning line that says, okay, well, your RS zoning and your RM zoning, we're saying, well, RM zoning historically has been more dense and would allow more movement of people in and out, where a single-family residential is just those families coming in and out. And trying to limit or protect those single-family homes in some way of having that 500-foot buffer.
Right.
Where over here, you could have three or four in a row and would not be an issue, but you couldn't have that in the RS zoning districts or the RNE.
Erin, just to clarify on that, so the ones where you, on a, where you can have multis right beside each other, that 500-foot does not, um, extend over into the other zoning, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that wouldn't affect, just to make it clear.
You could have one across the street.
You put a circle around that red block, whatever goes into the pink area doesn't affect someone in the pink area from having a spot right beside them. It doesn't overlap. And that could get confusing. But I think that was the intent, because if it overlaps, it's unfair to one or the other, because you have multiple in the yellow that would affect one being...
And I think, one of the questions I was asked was, well, if there's one 500-feet, so I buy this property, I decide I'm going to request a conditional use, and I can, I, I'm told that there's one 500-feet away. Does that completely deny my ability to apply? See, and that's where I think we have the trouble with the renewal process, or the process of, kind of, as you mentioned, you know, enforcement is. So that means I, I am denied, basically, the ability to use my property as I want, as I see fit, based on somebody else complying with rules, right? And how am I notified, like, how am I notified that this person is or isn't renewing? I mean, do I just have to, I, I guess I'm just thinking this sounds really, really messy.
Trying to do the renewal process once, at the same time every year.
Yeah, that's part of the changes.
So that would help in that situation.
Right, and I remember us talking about that a little bit.
Yeah, and, and I think...
But it still doesn't solve it completely, but it helps. That way your staff at that one time, he, as well as, you should have a pretty good list of what's already out there. They're going to renew January, whatever.
And I guess my other question to that is, so if I can't apply, so say I'm denied, I see that one is, you know, have one 500-feet, right? So I don't even have an application to submit, so I can't appeal being denied, right?
Right.
Right.
The, the plus side about it being once a year, the same time on that application renewal, is you should be able to say, okay, there's already one here. I shouldn't buy this house to, to do it. You know what I'm saying? And that's been the problem. They ought to not realize that it was all within 500.
But the other issue with that is, the, I'm going to use the term license, although that's not what we're calling it.
When, when this...
The approval, right, is only one portion of complying with the regulation.
Correct.
So just because I have one 500-feet away that has been quote "approved," and they're due for...
Doesn't mean it's being operated.
Exactly, and that's, that's the part that I think is unfair, is that where do you...
And that's where we changed our stuff, that we could revoke that license if they're not showing that they're actively using it as a short-term rental and paying those hotel occupancy taxes. There's, there's other reasons to revoke, but that's one of the reasons. Now, again, that's enforcement-heavy.
Right.
That's enforcement-heavy. It's, it's very challenging to do that. But so far, that's our direction from what our community, what we're thinking our community will want and live with. And that's the challenge of trying to figure that out, to put that blanket out there on the entire community of what is this going, how is this going to affect those properties?
But it would really be me, as a person who says, this person 500-feet away, I, as the property owner, would have to come, probably do my homework and make that complaint. And then, I mean, gosh, nice.
Erin, has there been a study as to eliminate the 500 and go back to the percentages? I mean, I know we started with the 500, and there was probably very good reason, very good thoughts. But is it time to relook based on what we know today? Or have we decided that this is the road we're going to stay on? But, you know, to the point that you're bringing, it's, you know, they're, they're excellent points. Are we doing the right thing is the question I'm asking.
Well, I can just talk to that a second, because I was on the committee that sat and deliberated to begin with SCRs. And the 500-feet came in major discussion mainly from Nazworthy and party houses on the lake, and the neighbors just were in hysterical arms about that. Um, and so they didn't want them next door and three on the same street and that kind of thing. And that's where putting a, a 500-feet, now I can't remember exactly why we came up with 500 and not 300 or whatever, but that's where that conversation came from in the very beginning of the STR, um, guidelines. So whether we can talk to it or not would be up to us to, uh, ask the council to make changes to that, if that's what we prefer to do.
Well, and Candy, to that point, sorry Travis.
No, go ahead.
What, what, I guess, so this is another thought, in my opinion. So the gentleman today and this young man that both of you guys that talked about, I mean, I, I'm not pro or anti or anything. I think it is a case-by-case basis, right? But that 500-feet limits that case-by-case basis. And there's also a process for, if you have three on the same street, that's when you fill this room, like we've seen multiple times, of the neighborhood saying, we don't want that. I mean, do you get what I'm saying? I think you're, I, that's what makes me nervous. And the thing is too, is there are neighborhoods out by the Coliseum or by Angelo State that probably the neighborhoods would benefit from investors, like we saw today, coming in and making those properties better too. So I guess I just, I see the point of it, and I, and again, I'm new here, and as I'm sitting here and learning more and whatnot, I, I'm starting to kind of say, whoa, 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 because I, I get, there is a process for saying, we don't want that short-term rental in our neighborhood. So to me, it's, you put it on your, you put it on the neighborhood to speak up and say, this is our expectation versus the city limiting someone's use of their private property.
The, uh, the opposition to short-term rentals, uh, and, and to Candy's point, during those discussions, a lot of late Nazworthy folks, um, had, had very loud voices in that discussion. But it's not just late Nazworthy. There, there are other parts of the community, other citizens. And, and one of the big arguments that they make is that short-term rentals are a business. It's a going concern. It's different than a long-term rental. Uh, and you're putting businesses in our neighborhoods that are supposed to be... And you're putting businesses in our neighborhoods that are supposed to be residences. You're eroding the, the, the beauty and the character of our neighborhoods by allowing these businesses to come in. Personally, what, what I've seen with short-term rentals is largely good. It's an investment in properties that are, that are typically dilapidated and need some work. As I've said before, a, a short-term rental's not gonna rent unless it looks good. It has to be furnished, you've got people that are going into these residences on a regular basis, so that the improvements are maintained to a high standard. I, personally, I'd rather have a short-term rental as a next-door neighbor than a long-term rental. But I also understand the opposition within our community, and I guess I'm kind of hopeful that in time, after seeing years of, of operating history, and, and as, as Trinidad said, you know, we haven't had, we don't have a lot of folks come in and complain about the short-term rental down the street that they were upset about that we approved. We don't have people coming in and saying, "There are keg parties at the short-term rental, we need to, we need to revoke the license." So, I, I agree with you that it's, that may not be considered really fair to, to put a 500 limit.
But I see why, I mean, I, yeah, I-
Yeah, I mean, I- We do not, and that, and that, that was the, the other point I wanted to clarify with Aaron. So the, the ordinance that we've written and that you're proposing to the city council is really restrictive on the, the single-family RS zoning designations. There are no commercial zoning designations that are part of this short-term policy.
Except for a zone change.
That, I would say that's correct. Now, when we get to schools, there'll be a question about schools versus commercial. But as this slide would represent, if you're in RM1, RM2, or a commercial district, we would not require the conditional use process. Where if you're in the RS districts or RNE, you would go through the conditional use process that gives that annual review. Right now, it would be, it would transition to staff unless staff says, "There's a reason to revoke this, let's bring that to planning commission." And then citizens have that come and say, "No, no, we've had these issues, multiple issues," and that's part of the review that staff does to bring that forward to you as a, a, let's, let's look at this one for revocation or not.
So, I agree with this, this idea that we exclude commercial, because in, in any aspect where you have commercial zoning that allows a hotel, how could you restrict short-term rentals any differently?
Well, and, and like this slide, the, the yellow's closer to downtown, which is getting closer to business. That's understandable, that's your buffer zone in between a residential, or a full-fledged residence. So I don't have a problem dealing with that, that scenario, you know?
Out of curiosity, Brandon, on the, um, the call or the meeting that you guys attended, and they were looking at a percentage base, how wide was the vicinity of, you know, like, was it a mile radius? Or was it like broken down by, how was that broken down?
Ray may need your help on this one, because she actually attended that meeting and brought it back to, to us for discussion. But, I mean, it was by neighborhood, I think, but how did they determine what the neighborhood?
Yeah, it was by neighborhood. They, whatever the city decided as a neighborhood, they then looked at the total number of houses that they had, and then did a percentage, like 30% is allowed.
Because I didn't know if it would be, because San, like, for instance, Santa Rita's such a big area, but if it made more sense, like, if you were to look at it as a percentage base, to break it down by addition, you know, because that addition is obviously a much smaller percentage than the general neighborhood.
Maybe as an idea, can you go back to my slide of one of the neighborhoods?
So, I'm gonna go back to her.
Like this, the Fort Concho?
Oh, Fort Concho.
Yeah, Fort Concho.
Massive.
There's lots of real estate into there. The challenge with the, the more percentage-wise, there's, there's two things. One, what if somebody decided to buy up a lot, a block? And then that's entirely, now, now you've got them concentrated, but maybe that's just one area, maybe that's okay. Then, the other thing is, the city does not have great enforcement ability right now with short-term rentals.
Right.
That's going to increase that responsibility to do that. I'm not saying that's not bad or wrong, we just don't have the abilities to do that now. And so I'm not sure, without going to a broader neighborhood, how do we choose that percentage? Because what if as an addition is six lots? What does that mean, they only get one, but then the one behind them's 200 lots?
Right.
Yeah.
It, it's challenging. I mean, any way you slice it, it's challenging. And going back to Trinidad, Trinidad's question about, what is the, the evidence is telling us cities all over the state are doing different things. There are some cities that have zero short-term rules, and as far as we know, they don't have a lot of issues. Maybe they do. There's others that have said, "Hey, we're gonna ban them completely," and then they're getting lots and lots of lawsuits, which will probably get overturned at some point, because there's a number of the courts that say that a short-term rental is a residential use and should be allowed in residential areas. And so we're trying to hit that balance somewhere through some of these updates, trying to make it a little easier, because we see some benefits from our short-term rentals for sure, but we also know that it can impact our residential areas. Yeah, see if I can get this back to you. No, that's a good suggestion though, that, that's a good visual. All right, so the next item, so this is a very busy map, I know it's all of our, our community. We're trying to figure out, how do we show this in an easier format? So, the red circles, blotches, whatever you want to call them, those are short-term rentals with their 500-foot buffer. Then you see the blue ones, those are schools with a 500-foot buffer. The red are the RS districts, and the green is anything besides an RS district. So you can see some areas that if we move forward with the schools also having the 500-foot buffer, particularly in commercial areas, then you're going to restrict some commercial properties from having a potential short-term rental. I think it makes a lot of sense in our neighborhood schools, that children are walking to homes, that makes a lot of sense. But what we're also saying in the commercial areas is if there's a 500-foot buffer, we are not treating hotels that way, because they also don't do background checks on who stays at their hotels. But we're gonna say, if you have a short-term rental, we're, we're kind of have that, maybe have that expectation. And I'm not saying they have to do background checks, so don't, don't misunderstand. But I think Austin did me one that's, this is just in the downtown area, we were just looking. We know up in this area, there's a number of residences and apartments up in this area. Well, there's freshman campus, there's Ambleside, and then there's a school here at one of the churches that's still classified as a school. Excuse me. Well, you see the 500-foot buffer, obviously, the pink in there is Shannon. But that would, then we have all that green area, and the question is, do we look at schools in commercial-zoned areas the same as we do for RS-zoned areas? Do we keep that 500-foot? Is that our recommendation to move forward to city council? My, our staff's recommendation would be no.
I don't know how you can do that.
I mean, if we're taking the, if we're taking the stance, for lack of a better word, that you could put a hotel there,
Yeah, are you gonna tell me I can put a hotel on one of these lots, but not a short-term rental?
Yeah, no.
What's the difference?
Yeah.
This whole area we're looking at downtown could be any of that, right?
And I think you're, I think the other issue with that is, I mean, if I, you said this is, this is by Shannon, right? Where I'm thinking, like central freshman campus, right?
Yeah, I believe that property's Shannon.
Yeah, I mean, think about-
This is the cactus right there, for reference, if you need, I mean, that's the cactus.
I mean, how many people do we know that, in terms of short-term rentals, are looking at nurses, I mean, and, and that's crime? I, yeah, I don't think you can do that.
Well, you see, we already have one right there, that's a short-term rental. That I know nursing and/or doctors or others that-
And again, I also think you, I think those areas that are commercial use are, that's what we're promoting. I mean, from any kind of like development standpoint too, I'm assuming, so, yeah, no.
And I'll go back to the big overview.
So, do we collectively agree to exclude the 500-foot rule from commercial?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. What other questions do you have, Aaron?
I'm hoping none. The real question is, what other questions do you guys, do you all feel comfortable moving forward with what we're gonna potentially propose? Is this is our ordinance moving forward? We're gonna ha, we're scheduled to have a discussion.
Even where we are, as a community, I think, yeah, I am.
Next Tuesday at council?
At council, it'll just be a discussion, it will not be the ordinance hearing, it will just be a discussion. We will probably ask for a month later, so that'd probably be that first meeting in April, that we'd actually have a, potentially a joint meeting, which we'd have to have if we need to hear this ordinance as a joint meeting. So I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it'd be the first Tuesday in April. That, that's kind of what we'd be looking at, is having a joint meeting. That gives enough time for staff to notify folks, to put it out in the paper, so that our community knows that this is going to have, be an ordinance heard.
Okay.
I know there are two short-term rental folks here, I don't know if you want to open it up for public comment just to see what they have to say, because I know that they do operate, and of course, the gentleman's just getting ready to start operating. So, we'd like to hear their comments too, if that's all right with you, Chad.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Jesse McMillan, my construction company is Elevated Developments, hopefully y'all be seeing that come to y'all pretty soon too. Our property is the one that's on 224 Bird, right next to Fort Concho. The entire neighborhood is falling apart. All the houses need roofs, they need siding, they need to be redone, they're historic houses, they're gorgeous houses, they just need some love. I would like to do that, but seeing as how we're already in one, it blocks us off from that entire area to do the next, so we'd have to jump to a whole different area. If I could go down the street, because we're two blocks from Twisted Route, you're walking distance to the, to downtown, the River Stage, Rio Concho Manor, Shannon, everything. So if we were able to go down that street and continue to update and bring up that neighborhood, we would love to. That's kind of why we put our feet in that area first, to start there, because we'd like to start getting those properties, knowing that this was a possibility, that this would change. I mean, I know it's all over the place as far as the ruling for that, but that's something that we were wanting to do.
So you would be in favor of removing the 500-foot separation?
Most definitely.
Okay.
Because it would definitely, I mean, in my opinion, I think it would help the neighborhood too, because it's all-
You're going in and cleaning up?
Yes.
Properties that otherwise are just gonna sit there.
Yeah, and, and there's, there are a couple that are vacant or for sale, or have squatters in them already, that I don't know who owns them, but they're not listed for sale, so not sure what the situation is there. But if I could come in and get them and fix them up, I would be more than willing. And eventually, I don't know how to do so, haven't got to that point in my career yet, but I would love to try and acquire or help with the remodel of the downtown area as well, some of the historic buildings, and kind of get into that as well, that's kind of where I want to be headed, but this is the stepping stones to that.
Okay.
But that's my opinion on it. There's a lot of different properties that I've seen, or, we stay in short-term rentals all the time, and there's been a couple places where we'll go for a wedding, and we have a big family that travels all at once, and we'll rent four SDRs right next to each other, and it's a great experience, because we're all right here, but we've got our own house.
Yes.
In those kinds of situations, it's nice, specifically downtown. But otherwise, yes, I think that removing the 500-foot rule would be good, not necessarily only for me, but for multiple people and neighborhoods specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Robinson with Single Dune District 5. So the 500-foot rule, I mean, that's been going on when y'all did it to first, that was just something y'all came up with. That wasn't, okay, 500 feet's gonna keep noise away from this other people, that's just, so that's just something that's... And me, I've been affected twice now by the 500-foot rule. First time was when I went to Princeton, went to the city, and y'all, and had to take it to the, the board, and they actually said yes. Because I looked at the map, map said that there wasn't there, wasn't there? We bought the property, a month later, they said, "Oh, it was there." This happened Friday.
Yeah.
Again, this on another property. We started looking for another property, we found a property, a look, and this was after, and, and I'm not, I'm not, not saying bad things about the staff. They're dealing with software from 1996, and none of us want to be on that. But, you know, so we look, we find a property, we look on the map, and we'd heard since then, hey, the map's good. The map is up today, we're good to go, right? Have we all heard that? I've been to come into these, all these meetings, and so I'm like, okay, great. So I get my inspector down there, I get contractors, we're starting to look at it. My last day to do it is on Sunday, we had a seven-day wait or whatever. So I think, you know what, I better go check, I better just check, just to make sure. Go talk to Austin, Austin said, he looks at the map, he goes, "I think you're good to go, but I need to check my Excel spreadsheet." I don't have that Excel spreadsheet. Now, this is after I've already spent 600 bucks to get it inspected and everything else. Austin calls me at 2 o'clock, "Ah, got some bad news." "Oh, really, what?" "Uh, there's one that's 360 feet." "What?" "Yeah, it's not on the map, apparently there's not five on the map, and that's one of them." So that, I mean, the 500-feet thing, I get it, but really, in all honesty, when I first started doing this, San Angelo was an A-plus market. Now, it's a C-market. This is all gonna be supply and demand.
Yeah.
And, and, and that, it's gonna all kind of work its way out. And, and I know all the residents here are a little bit nervous about SDRs coming in. But the, the thing that scares me the most about what y'all are about to do is the not being able to bring it back up to the 500, or the, if you're gonna do the 500 feet, you can't come back and say, "Hey, why, why," I mean, the, the zoning board of adjustments, they, they won't be able to hear our things. Is that right, Aaron? So, why? I mean, so I could've bought that house this weekend on y'all's map and done everything right, and then 200, I mean, it was gonna cost me 235,000. And I mean, so if that was the case with Princeton and Adams, it would've been nearly a half a million bucks that I would've had on real estate that I wouldn't have been able to come up. Why do we have a zoning board of adjustments if they can't adjust? You know? That's what, that's what my problem is.
Well, that, that would be the ordinance change, and under our ordinance, there's certain things that meet for variance, and there's different criteria that meet for those things. At this time, that's just been the proposal to move forward, is that those things would not be a variable item. As you, as you know, in the past, those things were interpreted by the director as not variable. The ZBA decided to say, "No, those could be variable."
Yes.
And we've been in that situation for maybe eight months to a year of those being variable, I could be wrong on the timeline. But that's, I think, the discussions that I've heard is that if there's a 500 feet, it should really be 500 feet. Now, staff has, staff has different feelings about that, but at the same time, we're bringing forward what the, the citizens, what we believe the citizens will, will want.
Right, right. And, and, and you're right, and I think Travis said it best, was, you know, a lot of the citizens, when they first come and they get theirs, those things, they're like, "Oh, I don't want an STR next to me." Well, I've just spent all weekend working at one of ours, and, you know, the people were coming up, and we haven't got it up and going yet. But they were coming up and asking, "Hey, well, when is this gonna come in? Because it's great for my family, they can come stay here, and I'm right down the street."
Yep.
And, and, you know, I don't know, I, I hate to have things that are, especially, if you're gonna do the 500 feet. So I, I've got one that's gonna come up hopefully with the zoning board of adjustments, that when I did the, the measurements on it, I was coming up 13 feet from 500 feet, so it was like 487 feet. Well, then I go down and ask Austin, Austin's coming up with, I think it was 518 feet. So, you know, everything's a little bit different, we, and you can't just say, "Okay, this is it." I mean, because 13 feet, so they're gonna, I'm not even gonna be able to bring it to the zoning board of adjustments on 13 feet? It just doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
You know? And, and, and I've been in here- And, and, and I've been in here, and I'm paying all my hot taxes, I'm doing that every month, which by the way, I think we need to do what Fredericksburg is doing with the STRs, they're doing the hot tax thing every quarter. So then it frees up y'all's lady accountant down there, you know, instead of doing it every month. But that's just one of the things. But I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this?
[laughter]
All right, I'm going to close public comment. Erin, you've got our feedback. Anything else from us?
No, I think that's good, thank you.
Okay. Public comment? Actually, I think Brittany may have something on public comment, so, is there anyone else that has? Let me read the notes here. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Been asked to limit it to three minutes. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on anything that we did not cover in the meeting?
I did have one item that was brought to my attention in regards to, sorry, y'all, the Fairview, let's see, sorry, the Stonewall Estates at Fairview, it was PP 23-15 and FP 23-40. In the letter that was sent to this particular person, it had mentioned in item.
There's a sidewalk requirement.
Three, yes, that 48 feet curb and gutter and sidewalk. This was a rural area, I realize that it was a major collector on a Fairview school road, but I do not remember us agreeing to the sidewalk portion of that, I thought that in our previous meeting that was pulled, and I would just like some clarification when you guys have a moment.
That is correct, that, that was an error on that approval letter, and we are in the process of.
So this has already been resolved?
Yes, we are working on getting a new approval letter sent out that reflects what was voted on and approved at, at the commission.
Thank you.
Perfect. Anyone else have anything they want to discuss in our public comment forum here? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Planning Director's Report.
I don't have anything specific this morning, we are going to be starting to look, to fill some staff, I was selected about a week and a half ago as the director, so I'm.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So now you can officially yell at me?
I was saying you were doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So very excited that our staff, they're still working very, very hard, got a big ZBA board coming up, and so we're working through different things, and Sherry's keeping, working on some of those areas that we're looking at, what have we not done in the last few years that we need to start looking at? So we're, we're starting to hit the ground running, and we'll keep working for you guys.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Follow-up and administrative issues, announcements, and consideration for future agenda items? Anyone have anything they want to add to the agenda? Adjournment, do I have a motion?
[inaudible].
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? SIG zero, it's 10:41 a.m.